Good morning. The thirty-seventh meeting of the tenth emergency special session of the General Assembly is called to order. I declare resumed the tenth emergency special session of the General Assembly on illegal Israeli actions in occupied East Jerusalem and the rest of the occupied Palestinian territory. Members will recall that in paragraph six of its resolution ES-ten slash eighteen of sixteenth January two thousand and nine, the General Assembly decided, I quote, "to adjourn the tenth emergency special session temporarily and to authorize the President of the General Assembly at its most recent session to resume its meeting upon request from member states," end quote. I should like to draw the attention of delegations to the following documents: A/ES-ten slash seven six nine, which contains a letter dated eighteenth December two thousand and seventeen from the permanent representatives of Turkey and Yemen to the United Nations requesting the resumption of the tenth emergency special session. And A/ES-ten slash seven seven one, which contains a letter dated nineteenth December two thousand and seventeen from the permanent representative of the Bolivarian Republic of Venezuela to the United Nations, also requesting the resumption of the tenth emergency special session. I intend to conduct the proceedings of this meeting in accordance with the rules of procedure of the General Assembly and past practice of the tenth emergency special session. In accordance with the rule sixty-three of the rules of procedure of the General Assembly, the President and Vice Presidents of the seventy-second session shall serve in the same capacity at the resumed tenth emergency special session. May I take it that it is the wish of the General Assembly to decide that the credentials committee of the seventy-second session should serve for the resumed tenth emergency special session? It is so decided. In keeping with the established practice, I should now like to invite the attention to the General Assembly to document A/ES-ten slash seven seven zero concerning member states that are in arrears in the payment of their financial contributions to the United Nations within the terms of Article nineteen of the Charter. May I take it that the General Assembly duly takes note of the information contained in this document? It is so decided. In this connection, may I further take it that it is the wish of the General Assembly to follow the provisions of Resolution seventy-two slash two by which the Comoros, Guinea-Bissau, Southomen Princip and Somalia are permitted to vote in the General Assembly until the end of its seventy-second session and to also allow these member states to vote at the emergency special session? It is so decided. The General Assembly will now resume its consideration of agenda item five entitled Illegal Israeli Actions in Occupied East Jerusalem and the Rest of the Occupied Palestinian Territory. In connection with this item, the General Assembly has before it a draft resolution issued as document A/ES-ten slash L twenty-two. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Yemen to introduce draft resolution A/ES-ten slash L twenty-two.
Mr. President, I am here to offer our sincere appreciation to you, Your Excellency, President of the General Assembly, for holding the tenth emergency special session of the United Nations in General Assembly in light of the sensitive circumstances that our region is experiencing and which constitute a threat to international peace and security. In accordance with Resolution number eight thousand two hundred and twenty-one of the Arab League Ministerial Council held in its extraordinary session in Cairo on the ninth of December two thousand and seventeen and the extraordinary exceptional session held by the Islamic Summit in Istanbul on the thirteenth of December two thousand and seventeen. We would also like to express our sincere gratitude to all the member states of the Non-Aligned Movement for their support for holding this emergency special session, which is in line with their firm position on the question of Palestine. Mr. President, we express our regret over the fact that the United States of America exercised the veto against the draft resolution submitted by the Egyptian Arab Republic at the Security Council on behalf of the Arab group which aims to protect the city of Jerusalem and refuse any attempt to change its legal and historical position that is deeply entrenched in international law. We would also like to express our condemnation of the approach adopted by the United States of America to confront and to run counter to fourteen votes in the Security Council, which are representative of international consensus, rather unanimity, on the status of the city of Al-Quds Sharif in line with the principles of international law, international legitimacy and United Nations resolutions relevant. The decision taken by the United States Administration on the sixth of December two thousand and seventeen on the status of Jerusalem is considered null and void and has no legal consequence that would change the status of occupied Jerusalem. It is considered a blatant violation of the rights of the Palestinian people and the Arab nation and all Muslims and Christians of the world. It is considered a dangerous violation and breach of international law on the Charter of the United Nations, which stipulates the inadmissibility of the forceful annexation of land and it is a serious threat to stability, peace and security in the region and in the world, not to mention the fact that it undermines any chances for peace and a two-state solution and only serves to foment fires of violence and extremism. East Jerusalem continues to be occupied, Mr. President, and it is an inseparable part of the lands of the state of Palestine and we confirm that Palestine has an absolute right to exercise its sovereignty on all occupied Palestinian territories that have been occupied since nineteen sixty-seven, including East Jerusalem. Therefore, we call on all states, including the United States of America, to not recognize any measures and any steps that run counter to that and we ask that they refrain from the establishment of diplomatic missions in the holy city pursuant to Security Council resolutions as has been endorsed by the draft resolution presented and the General Assembly's position on this question, which has remained steadfast over many decades. We strongly condemn all Israeli policies, practices and plans that are illegal and that aim to annex the occupied East Jerusalem and change its Arab identity and demographic structure. We reject all attempts to change the historic and legal status of Islamic and Christian holy sites in the city, including Al-Haram Al-Sharif. And here we appreciate the role that is being played by the Kingdom of Jordan in offering protection and in confronting all of these illegal attempts as the guardian of the holy sites in the city. Furthermore, we appreciate the role that is being played by the Committee on Al-Quds, which is led by the Moroccan Kingdom. We also salute the steadfastness of the sisterly Palestinian people who stand to defend their land, their holy sites, their history and their culture in the face of oppression and of injustice and of aggression and in the face of anyone who tries to deny their right to exist and their natural right to exist in a holy Arab city. Mr. President, the Israeli occupation of Arab territories, including Palestinian land, is the source of all tension in the region. There will be no security and no stability in the region without finding a solution that will do justice to the Palestinian people and will give them their legitimate rights in freedom and dignity and the independence of a Palestinian state with East Jerusalem as its capital on the basis of the Land for Peace principle and the two-state solution in accordance with the Terms of Reference of Peace, which also include the Arab Peace Initiative that continues to stand since two thousand and two and forms the just basis for a peaceful solution as has been agreed on by this international community, including the Security Council. Today, the Yemeni Republic, in its capacity as chair of the Arab group for this month and in partnership with Turkey as the chair of the Islamic Summit, present the General Assembly with a draft resolution on the status of the city of Jerusalem under the title "United for Peace." This draft resolution stipulates that any decisions and actions which purport to have altered the character, status or demographic composition of the holy city of Jerusalem have no legal effect, are null and void completely and must be rescinded in compliance with relevant resolutions of the Security Council and in this regard calls upon all states to refrain from the establishment of diplomatic missions in the holy city of Jerusalem pursuant to Security Council Resolution number four seven eight of the year nineteen eighty. Moreover, it demands that all states comply with Security Council resolutions regarding the holy city of Jerusalem, Al-Quds Sharif, and not recognize any actions or measures contrary to these resolutions. Moreover, it reiterates its call for the reversal of the negative trends on the ground that are imperiling the two-state solution and for the intensification and acceleration of international and regional efforts and support aimed at achieving without delay a comprehensive, just and lasting peace in the Middle East. On the basis of the relevant United Nations resolutions, the Madrid Terms of Reference, including the principle of land for peace, the Arab Peace Initiative and the Quartet Road Map and an end to the Israeli occupation that began in nineteen sixty-seven. Mr. President, we'd like to take this opportunity to express our sincere gratitude to the great efforts exerted by the sisterly Arab Republic of Egypt in its capacity as the Arab delegation and the Security Council in tabling the draft resolution at the Council and as well as bolstering the necessary support for it. We thank all member states that have voted in favor of the draft resolution and we salute their principled position towards the question. And we would also like to express our thanks to all of the delegations that have joined in the sponsorship of the draft resolution that we submit today for supporting the principles that this resolution stands for, which is also a reflection of their firm positions on the rule of law and the just cause of Palestine. We call upon all peace-loving countries that truly want peace. We call upon them to stand steadfast for the rule of law. We ask them to support this draft resolution, to vote for right, to vote for peace, to vote for stability in the Middle East and the entire world, I think.
I thank the distinguished representative of Yemen. I now give the floor to the observer of the state of Palestine, His Excellency Riyad Al-Malki, Minister for Foreign Affairs.
Your Excellency, President of the General Assembly, Mr. Laechek, Your Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen. ladies and gentlemen, we have asked, we have called for holding this 10th Emergency Special Session of the General Assembly in order to make heard the voice of the international community, which has been embodied by the reactions of peoples and the positions of countries throughout the world. As the obvious majority was experienced in the Security Council where a vote was conducted on a draft resolution that confirms the legal and political and historical status of Al-Quds Asharif and the fact that any attempts to change the status would be null and void. Here, I would like to thank the Arab Group and the member states and the Organization of Islamic Cooperation and the Non-Aligned Movement for calling for this emergency session after the use of the veto obstructed the Security Council and made it unable to perform its duties in maintaining international peace and security, despite the fact that 14 member states of the Council supported the draft resolution tabled by Egypt and which we thank her for. The General Assembly now has within its prerogatives the right to undertake this responsibility as per the United for Peace principle, and this session comes after decisions were issued by the Arab Ministerial Council, which was held in Cairo upon the request of the state of Palestine and the Kingdom of Jordan as the guardian of the holy sites in Jerusalem. It also comes pursuant to the extraordinary session of the OIC that was held in Istanbul under the chairmanship of Turkey. It also comes in light of the international consensus on the dangerous nature of the U.S. decision and its repercussions on peace and security at the regional and international levels. We meet today not because of any animosity towards the United States of America, but because of its decision, which constitutes an aggression on the genuine and natural right of the Palestinian people to the city of Al-Quds Asharif and the Arab nation and all the Muslims and Christians of the world. An aggression on the status of Jerusalem, its religious and humanitarian status that is exceptional, and we would like to confirm that the American decision will not impact the status and position of the holy city in any way whatsoever. Rather, it naturally affects the status of the United States as mediator of peace. Because it has failed in the test of Jerusalem, despite our warnings and the warnings of the entire world not to take this test seriously, and our warnings of the danger of taking any positions and any decisions that would inflame religious feelings and would contribute towards transferring this solution, a political solution that can be solved, to a religious war that has no boundaries. We cannot help but ask, what does this decision serve? It serves the Israeli government in implementing its colonial plans. It serves the powers of extremism and terrorism in the region and the world. Who could imagine that there would be any credibility to a peace plan where Jerusalem is excluded? Is there any voice that supports peace and that enjoys credibility, that has supported this decision? How has this decision been described by states and by regional and political blocs and parliaments and even the Secretary General of the United Nations, not to mention the Christian and Islamic religious establishments and authorities throughout the world? Does not the United States wonder why it stands isolated in this position, which is being rejected by everyone near and far, and why even its closest allies couldn't even turn a blind eye to this decision? The answer is clear. Al-Quds Asharif is the cradle of civilization. It is the land of the divine religions. It is the path of the prophet. It is the gateway to heaven. It is the city of the nativity of Al-Aqsa. It is the first of the two points of prayer, the third of the holy mosques. It cannot be misrepresented. It cannot be falsified. It will not fall to any siege or any domination or any monopolization. It is the key to war. It is the key to peace in the Middle East and in the entire world. Therefore, international law and international consensus were clear over Jerusalem. All states care for respecting the special status of Jerusalem and the historic status of the holy sites, including Al-Haram Asharif. Today, the United States once again misses an opportunity to go back on an illegal and provocative decision. It misses an opportunity to join the international community and put an end to its isolation. However, it insists on ignoring the dangerous repercussions of its decisions and the calls of international community upon it to respect the laws of international legitimacy, which govern our world and which prevent the escalation of conflict and offer a framework of reference for just peaceful solutions. Mr. President, the state of Palestine respects the sovereignty of states so long as this sovereignty is in line with international law. However, we refuse to have sovereignty used as an excuse to violate international law and to trespass on the rights of our Palestinian people, which are inalienable, and we refuse to have it used to deny our right to exist on our land. We stand here today with the countries of the world, all of the world, united for freedom, for justice, for peace. The veto will not stop us. We will not be threatened. We are confronting these challenges, and in doing this, we rely on international law and we seek its judgment, and we do not seek what appears to be religious advice that is being used in order to justify colonialism and to justify the forceful annexation of land. We wonder how Israel, the occupying authority, has not yet realized that the countries here represent peoples that for many decades suffered from colonialism, apartheid, oppression, domination, aggression, and that they know very well the difference between colonialist desires and others, and will refuse any kind of justification for these crimes, be it a security justification, religious one or national one, because these are justifications that have been exposed by the experience and the struggles of peoples. And these countries and their peoples are loyal, and Palestine will not forget the support that it has received from them until they have achieved and regained their freedom and independence. Moreover, these states recognize and understand the rationale for which this international organization was formed over 70 years ago, in the aftermath of World War II. It is a logic that is based on justice, collective will, and which is embodied in the Charter of the United Nations and international law. This organization is now undergoing an unprecedented test, with Palestine being its headline. All international frameworks that have agreed on our right, on the justice of our Palestinian cause. This includes the General Assembly, the Security Council, the Human Rights Council, the International Court of Justice, and the Conference of the High Contracted Member States of the Fort Geneva Convention. And today, we trust that the states in voting will rely on these bases and these firm foundations, which are also based on a logic that is aligned with human civilization. Mr. President, history records names. It remembers names, the name of those who stand by what is right and the names of those who speak falsehoods. And today, we are seekers of rights and peace despite the oppression and the injustice that has befallen our people, children, women, the elderly. It is an oppression that started about 100 years ago to the catastrophe 70 years ago to the occupation of the West Bank, including East Jerusalem and Gaza Strip 50 years ago and until this very day. And despite our march on the path of pain for over a century, we have not wavered in our will to achieve peace whenever we were given the chance. However, colonialism and peace do not meet, and those who choose peace must rescind colonialism. And those who choose colonialism are the enemies of peace, and Israel does not hide its policies and its intentions. The mediator has decided to take its side and thus acknowledge what is wrong and ignore what is right. This requires the formation of a multilateral international mechanism under the United Nations and on the basis of international legitimacy and the framework of reference of the peace process that would embody the international will to put an end to occupation and conflict and to achieve a just, comprehensive, and lasting peace that would guarantee security and peace to all the peoples in the region. The peace process is not the exclusive property of one party, and the question of Palestine is the responsibility of the international community as a whole, including the United Nations, in order to arrive at a just solution that would guarantee the rights of the Palestinian people and in a manner that cannot be limited and tied to the good intentions of the international community, more the occupational power. And these states cannot use the excuse of supporting the dialogue between states to manipulate and maneuver out of the responsibility and duties toward international law and not recognize the illegitimate status that Israel has created and not contribute towards the continuation of this process. And it must distinguish between the occupied territories and the occupying power, and it must hold accountable those who commit and perpetrate violations. It must support the Palestinian people in their just struggle to achieve freedom and independence, including recognizing a Palestinian state within the 1967 borders, our steadfastness in our land, in our historic land, and our desire to achieve freedom and dignity and our hope to achieve security and welfare to our people and our future generations is renewed every day. However, the barbarism of the Israeli occupation is taking away the dreams and the future of the Palestinian people. It is enough to mention what we've seen in the few days where a person, a handicapped Palestinian, was shot by a sniper in his wheelchair. A child was shot in the face. An entire battalion of soldiers have surrounded an unarmed young man, the kidnapping of a brave girl child in the middle of the night from the arms of her parents. When will this end? When will our catastrophe end? When will we achieve our freedom and live in dignity, in peace, and security on our land and the land of our predecessors and ancestors? The world is celebrating the birth of Christ over the next few days, but the lights will not be lit in the land of Christ, in Jerusalem, in Bethlehem, and in Nazareth, as a response to attempts to eliminate the Palestinian, Arab, Christian, and Islamic identity of the city and an affirmation of the unity of the Palestinian people around their cause. History has taken its position on colonialism and apartheid and settlements and wars, and Palestine cannot remain a lone hostage to the tragedies of historical phases that humanity has rejected and refused. The Palestinian people continue to hold fast and stand fast in Jerusalem and in its streets and alleys as an organic relationship exists between them that cannot be dismembered. And we would like to note here that the Palestinian people are standing to defend the same values that you've come here to defend, and I call upon you, on behalf of the Palestinian people, to vote in favor of the draft resolution in order to make heard the voice of a firm right that cannot be denied and in order to take a fair position in history and to recognize principles in international law and your own resolutions and in order to combat attempts at fraud and to reject blackmail and intimidation. Those who want peace must vote for peace today. I thank you.
I thank the observer of the state of Palestine, His Excellency Minister for Foreign Affairs. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Turkey, His Excellency Mr. Mevlut Çabuşoglu, Minister for Foreign Affairs.
Mr. President, thank you for convening this historic UN General Assembly meeting. I would also like to welcome His Excellency Mr. Riyad Malki, the Minister for Foreign Affairs of Palestine. Dear friends, for so many times, we came here and said that the Palestinians have the right to live like the rest of us. They have the right to be free and secure. They have the right to be prosperous, and they have the right to enjoy what is their own. Yet, our words couldn't make a change. The illegal occupation continues, and Palestinians cannot enjoy their basic rights. Generations of Palestinians are subject to systematic violence and discrimination. Today's world is important to remind that the Palestinians are not alone. This world is important to show that Palestinian cause is still our cause. Therefore, today, we will speak up for justice and peace. Today, we will speak up for Al-Quds Jerusalem, the city of three divine faiths. We will show that different ethnicities and religions can coexist in peace in Palestine. Excellencies, dear friends, the Palestinians have the right to their own state based on 1967 borders with East Jerusalem as its capital. This is the main parameter and only hope for a just and lasting peace in the region. However, the recent decision of a UN member state to recognize Jerusalem or Al-Quds as the capital of Israel violates the international law, including all relevant UN resolutions. This decision is an outrageous assault to all universal values. As the Summit Chair of the Organization of Islamic Cooperation, OIC, we convened an extraordinary summit in Istanbul on December 13. The OIC, as the world's second-largest intergovernmental body, unanimously rejected the decision as null and void, consistent with the UN Security Resolution 476, which censored in the strongest terms a similar decision taken by the Israeli parliament in 1980. The OIC also declared East Jerusalem as the capital of the state of Palestine. Mr. President, excellencies, friends, Al-Quds Jerusalem is a holy city for all three monotheistic religions. It is the responsibility of entire humanity to preserve its historic status. Unilateral decisions on its status threaten the multi-ethnic and multicultural fabric of the city. Such steps undermine prospects for a just and lasting peace in the Middle East. They hinder the vision for a two-state solution. Regrettably, the Security Council failed to deliver on its responsibilities once again through the use of veto power. Now, the duty falls upon the UN General Assembly to bring justice. Excellencies, dear friends, before this meeting, a UN member state threatened all the other members. We were all asked to vote no or face the consequences. Some are even threatened with the Development Aid Cut. Such an attitude is unacceptable. This is bullying, and this chamber will not vote to do that. It is unethical to think that the words and dignity of member states are for sale. Let me put it in this way: We will not be intimidated. You can be strong, but this doesn't make you right. Mr. President, excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, dear friends, this is a critical moment in history. A word in favor of the Palestinian people today will place us on the right side of the history. We did it before, when we granted Palestine the status of non-member observer state at the UN back in 2012. It is our sincere hope that this world will pave the way for much-needed peace and justice in the Middle East. Turkey, as the co-chair of OIC summit, co-tabled the resolution along with Yemen. Also, together with the Arab League, we requested the President of the General Assembly... we requested the president of the General Assembly to convene this emergency special session. I would like to conclude on behalf of the entire Turkish nation that Turkey will never let Al Quds down. The Palestinian people will never be left alone. World is bigger than five. Thank you, Mister President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Turkey, His Excellency the Minister for Foreign Affairs. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the United States.
Thank you, Mister President. To its shame, the United Nations has long been a hostile place for the State of Israel. Both the current and the previous Secretary Generals have objected to the UN's disproportionate focus on Israel. It's a wrong that undermines the credibility of this institution and that in turn is harmful for the entire world. I've often wondered why, in the face of such hostility, Israel has chosen to remain a member of this body. And then I remember that Israel has chosen to remain in this institution because it's important to stand up for yourself. Israel must stand up for its own survival as a nation, but it also stands up for the ideals of freedom and human dignity that the United Nations is supposed to be about. Standing here today, being forced to defend sovereignty and the integrity of my country, the United States of America, many of the same thoughts have come to mind. The United States is by far the single largest contributor to the United Nations and its agencies. We do this in part in order to advance our values and our interests. When that happens, our participation in the UN produces great good for the world. Together, we feed, clothe and educate desperate people. We nurture and sustain fragile peace in conflict areas throughout the world. And we hold outlaw regimes accountable. We do this because it represents who we are. It is our American way. But we'll be honest with you. When we make generous contributions to the UN, we also have a legitimate expectation that our goodwill is recognized and respected. When a nation is singled out for attack in this organization, that nation is disrespected. What's more, that nation is asked to pay for the privilege of being disrespected. In the case of the United States, we are asked to pay more than anyone else for that dubious privilege. Unlike in some UN member countries, the United States government is answerable to its people. As such, we have an obligation to acknowledge when our political and financial capital is being poorly spent. We have an obligation to demand more for our investment. And if our investment fails, we have an obligation to spend our resources in more productive ways. Those are the thoughts that come to mind when we consider the resolution before us today. The arguments about the president's decision to move the American Embassy to Jerusalem have already been made. They are by now well-known. The decision was in accordance to US law dating back to nineteen ninety-five and its position has been repeatedly endorsed by the American people ever since. The decision does not prejudge any final status issues, including Jerusalem's boundaries. The decision does not preclude a two-state solution if the apartheid agree to that. The decision does nothing to harm peace efforts. Rather, the president's decision reflects the will of the American people and our right as a nation to choose the location of our embassy. There is no need to describe it further. Instead, there is a larger point to make. The United States will remember this day in which it was singled out for attack in the General Assembly for the very act of exercising our right as a sovereign nation. We will remember it when we are called upon to once again make the world's largest contribution to the United Nations. And we will remember it when so many countries come calling on us, as they so often do, to pay even more and to use our influence for their benefit. America will put our embassy in Jerusalem. That is what the American people want us to do and it is the right thing to do. No vote in the United Nations will make any difference on that. But this vote will make a difference on how Americans look at the UN and on how we look at countries who disrespect us in the UN. And this vote will be remembered. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of the United States. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Israel.
Thank you, Mister President. It is shameful for the United Nations that I must stand before you today. It is shameful that this meeting is even taking place. Jerusalem is the holiest place on earth for the Jewish people. It is the capital of the State of Israel, period. It is a fact that simply cannot be disputed. King David declared Jerusalem the city of the Jewish people three thousand years ago. The Jewish Bible mentions Jerusalem six hundred sixty times. Our prayers recall Jerusalem's holy name over and over again. As our Prime Minister, the first Prime Minister, David Ben Gurion, said, and I quote, Jerusalem is an inseparable part of the history of Israel, of the faith of Israel. I am holding an original coin. It's from sixty-seven A.D. It says in Hebrew, and I quote, "Freedom of Zion." Look in the envelope in front of you. You will see you have a replica of the coin. It is clear evidence from the time of our second temple. It proves the ancient connection of Jews to Jerusalem. Our bond to Jerusalem is unbreakable. No UNESCO declaration, no empty speeches, no General Assembly resolution will ever drive us from Jerusalem. These are the facts this body does not want to hear. These are the facts this body wishes to ignore. So today, I will tell you about another unbreakable bond. The unbreakable bond of hypocrisy between the Palestinians and the United Nations. Some have cautioned that the United States' decision is one-sided and harmful to peace. The opposite is true. It is the one-sided steps of the Palestinians and the UN that have pushed away peace for years. With every anti-Israel resolution, with every attack on my people, the UN has perfected its double standard. We are now sitting in an open session, an emergency session of the General Assembly. This session has been nineteen ninety-seven. We live in a world that is full of conflict and war, but only when it comes to Israel, the one true democracy in the Middle East, that this assembly remain in a constant open session. How many times has Israel reached its hand in peace since nineteen ninety-seven? How many times have we offered the Palestinians to join us in dialogue? How many times have these calls for peace been rejected? All of us, all of us have lost count. When Prime Minister Barak offered the Palestinians a state in two thousand, we were met with suicide bombers on our buses and shootings in our streets. In two thousand five, Prime Minister Sharon disengaged from Gaza. He removed every single Israeli home. You will not find any settlements, any occupation in Gaza anymore. Since then, we have been attacked again and again with rockets and missiles aimed at our civilians. Yet, this body was silent. The United States simply stated a fact. They officially declared what has always been true. Jerusalem has been and always will be the capital of the State of Israel. Those who support today's resolution are like puppets. You are puppets pulled by the strings of your Palestinian puppet masters. You are like marionettes forced to dance while the Palestinian leadership looks on with glee. You are blind to the lies, unaware of the manipulation surrounding you, just like a puppet. This vote is nothing more than a performance of delusion. The Palestinians know this resolution is a fraud. They know this resolution does absolutely nothing for the lives of the Palestinian people. They know it won't create jobs for their people. They know it won't provide better health care for the people of Ramallah or Gaza. No, this resolution is nothing more than a distraction. All it will do is tell the Palestinians they can continue rejecting peace. And if you vote for it, you are sanctioning that view. I thank those brave countries that do not support this resolution. You have not fallen prey to the puppet show before us. You are the defenders of real peace. You are the leaders who prove that no UN resolution can rewrite history. Because when a UN resolution designates Israel's presence in parts of Jerusalem as illegal, in reality, it designates the presence of the Jewish people at the Western Wall as illegal. Mister President, for thousands of years, Jews had only partial access or were even banned completely from the Western Wall. Other nations, kingdoms and empires that occupied Jerusalem over the centuries had no respect for freedom of religion. But when Israel was founded, we established a strong democracy. Our democracy is based on individual freedoms. One of those freedoms is the freedom of religion. And all these years later, our democracy and our commitment to those freedoms continue to thrive. We know Jerusalem is sacred to billions around the world. Israel respects all religions and encourages everyone to visit and pray in the Holy City. Mister President, there is a particular irony with today's resolution. Countries that sponsor today's resolution accuse the United States and Israel of violating international law. Countries like Yemen, where terror groups like Al Qaeda and ISIS find fertile ground, the irony continues. In every other scenario, this body preaches human rights and peace, but not when it comes to Israel. In fact, you completely ignore the horrific acts of terror that threaten Israeli citizens. These past two weeks alone have seen twenty-three rocket attacks by Hamas into Israel. We heard nothing from the UN. No Security Council meeting, no emergency session of the General Assembly, nothing. The PA threatened violence and days of rage, but the UN had no condemnation. Mister President, let me be clear, violence and terror must never be tolerated. If this body were really united for peace, it would pass a resolution condemning Palestinian violence. This resolution only encourages more violence and instability. It encourages the Palestinian leadership to continue on this dangerous path. You permit them to pursue violence in the name of Jerusalem, the city of peace. Mister President, Israel is an optimistic country. We returned home after thousands of years in exile. We made the desert bloom and defended our country from countless attacks. Forty-two years ago, this body, here is the General Assembly, this body adapted a different shameful resolution. It equated Zionism with racism. It took sixteen long years for that hateful resolution to be revoked. I have no doubt that today's resolution will also end up in the trash bin of history. I have no doubt that the day will come when the entire international community will finally come to recognize Jerusalem as the eternal capital of the State of Israel. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Israel. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Bolivarian Republic of Venezuela on behalf of the Non-Aligned Movement.
Señor President. President, it is an honor for the Bolivarian Republic of Venezuela to take the floor, speaking on behalf of the Non-Aligned Movement. A movement which, together with the Organization for Islamic Cooperation and the League of Arab States, requested the resumption of this tenth emergency special session of the General Assembly. And we made that request in light of the most recent events related to the question of Palestine. In making this request, we underscored the importance that we attach to the fate and future of the heroic people of Palestine as well as to the status of the city of Jerusalem. I would like to take this opportunity at the outset to express our gratitude to you for your prompt and positive response to our request, a request which channels the concerns of the free peoples of the world. It is important to emphasize that this plenary meeting has been convened in line with provisions laid out in Resolution three hundred and seventy-seven A of the General Assembly dated the third of November nineteen fifty, a Union for Peace. And it is particularly important to bear that in mind as we consider that the Security Council remains silent and gridlocked on this particular issue despite its obligations under the Charter. And we saw evidence of that paralysis in the Security Council on Monday, the eighteenth of December of this year, when the delegation of the United States of America wielded its veto during a vote on a draft resolution of the Security Council on the status of the city of Jerusalem as submitted by the distinguished delegation of the Arab Republic of Egypt. President, the Non-Aligned Movement would like to express how deeply alarmed we are by the ongoing violations perpetrated by Israel, the occupying power, in the occupied Palestinian territory, including attempts to alter the character, status and demographic composition of the city of Jerusalem. We deplore each and every violation of international law and the provocations that have occurred in the city. And we deplore them irrespective of who is responsible for them or where they take place, emphasizing that such actions are legally null and emphasizing that such actions are legally null and void as the Security Council of the United Nations has itself determined. We reiterate our support for all the resolutions of the Security Council and of the General Assembly pertaining to Jerusalem. And we reiterate that Jerusalem is an integral part of the occupied Palestinian territory. Moreover, the member states of the Non-Aligned Movement, or NAM, wish to express their serious concern following the statements and plans announced by the President of the United States of America, Donald Trump, on the sixth of December of this year, his plan and intention to move the embassy of his country to the city of Jerusalem in Israel. We similarly decry any further action related to seeking to tighten Israel's grip over and its illegal de facto annexation of the city of Jerusalem. Allow me to sound the alarm once again that any such provocations, or provocations that are moreover violations of Security Council resolutions, serve only to inflame an already tense situation and the potential unlimited negative fallout is a sobering unknown. We call upon the government of the United States of America to halt these violations and provocations. Similarly, we recall the principles and purposes as enshrined in the Charter of the United Nations, including the prohibition to acquire land and territory through force. We also recall the relevant resolutions of the Security Council and the General Assembly and all the provisions of international law, in particular the Fourth Geneva Convention. We recall in particular Resolutions four hundred and seventy-six and four hundred and seventy-eight of the Security Council, in which the Security Council inter alia explicitly stated that all acts and measures of a legislative or administrative nature as taken by Israel, the occupying power, intended to alter the character and/or status of the Holy City of Jerusalem are legally null and void, and that they must be immediately rescinded. The Security Council also affirmed that the promulgation of the Basic Law by Israel constituted a violation of international law. In its Resolutions four hundred and seventy-six and four hundred and seventy-eight, the Security Council decided not to recognize the Basic Law and the further measures that Israel, as a result of this law, had taken to alter the character and status of Jerusalem. The Security Council in the same resolutions called upon all member states to abide by its decision, expressly calling upon those states that had established diplomatic representation in Jerusalem to withdraw said diplomatic representations from the Holy City. We therefore urge full respect for the relevant resolutions and decisions of the Security Council. Said resolutions and decisions are legally binding on each and every one of us in our capacity as member states of this House. President, the Non-Aligned Movement issues a further warning that against the backdrop of this extremely volatile situation and the slim prospects for achieving a just peace, all provocative, illegal and unilateral actions in Jerusalem, as well as the constant threat of such provocative, illegal and/or unilateral actions, in addition to weakening the possibilities of achieving the two-state solution on the basis of the pre-1967 borders, could also seriously destabilize what is already a very fragile situation, a powder keg on the ground with dangerous consequences. For this reason, the movement further recalls Resolution twenty-three thirty-four of the Security Council, adopted almost a year ago, in which the Council underscored inter alia that it will not recognize any change to the fourth of June nineteen sixty-seven borders, including with respect to Jerusalem, that are not agreed to by the parties through negotiation. In twenty-three thirty-four, the Security Council called upon the parties to refrain from engaging in acts of provocation and incitement, to refrain from making statements and declarations that only entrench hostilities, and to refrain from such acts for, amongst other purposes, the goal of de-escalating the situation on the ground, restoring trust and demonstrating through political and other measures a genuine commitment to the two-state solution, and to foster the necessary preconditions for promoting peace. In light of the aforementioned, the member states of the NAM wish to reiterate their commitment to contribute to finding a fair, peaceful and lasting solution to the question of Palestine, covering all aspects of said question commensurate with international law. We underscore the urgent need to work collectively to promote peace and security through bringing to an end, without further delay, the Israeli occupation that began more than fifty years ago in nineteen sixty-seven. The NAM further appeals for a ramping up of all regional and international efforts towards this goal, including efforts related to the preservation of the two-state solution on the basis of the pre-1967 borders, in line with the longstanding terms of reference for a peace agreement as endorsed by the international community. Said efforts will be in line with the relevant resolutions of the United Nations, the Madrid Principles, including the principle of land for peace, the Arab Peace Initiative and the Quartet Roadmap. It is important to emphasize, moreover, that only a holistic and comprehensive solution to the question of Palestine will allow us to achieve the long-aspired peace in the region of the Middle East and thus to draw an end, once and for all, to the Arab-Israeli conflict in its entirety. To conclude, the Non-Aligned Movement reaffirms its historic support for and solidarity with the just Palestinian cause and its unwavering commitment to continue supporting the heroic Palestinian people as they pursue their desire to enjoy their inalienable rights and achieve their legitimate national aspirations, including the right to self-determination, to freedom and to independence, living in their independent state of Palestine with East Jerusalem as the capital of that independent state. This is vital for the reaching of a fair, comprehensive and lasting peace. President, one last thought that occurs to me now and that I will share my national capacity. Our message to the current administration of the United States of America, to that country's government, is the following. The world is not for sale. The world is not for sale, and your threats imperil global peace. Thank you very much, President.
I thank the distinguished representative of the Bolivarian Republic of Venezuela on behalf of Non-Aligned Movement. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Pakistan.
Thank you, Mister President. My delegation joins others in commending your decision to promptly reconvene the tenth emergency special session of the General Assembly on the question of Jerusalem. In the face of this new challenge, where unilateral actions by one country are set to undo decades of work of the international community and to defy international law, this parliament of man, this parliament of the world, is the right and appropriate forum to send a reassuring message to the suffering and the long-oppressed people of Palestine, who have been losing hope in the possibility of securing a viable, contiguous and independent state of Palestine, as well as losing hope in the effectiveness of the United Nations to address their plight. Mister President, on behalf of the people and the government of Pakistan, I wish to reiterate that the US decision to recognize Jerusalem as a so-called capital of Israel and to relocate its embassy to the Holy City constitutes a clear violation of international law and is contrary to the provisions of several United Nations Security Council and General Assembly resolutions. We regret and we reject this action and urge the United States to rescind its decision. Mister President, we find ourselves at one of history's turning points. The extraordinary developments of the past few weeks warrant an equally extraordinary response from us. We must uphold the prevalent and time-honored norms, both legal and moral. We must also recommit to thwarting any and all attempts to violate the inalienable rights of the Palestinian people and the ultimate goal of a two-state solution. My delegation believes that the US veto earlier this week in the Council represents a dangerously misplaced strategy. The veto attempted to legitimize a declaration that is already null and void and lacks any legality. Through the resolution that we will adopt today, the rest of the world will say clearly and unambiguously that it cannot and will not be complicit in any act of illegality. Mister President, support to the Palestinian cause and the defense of Al-Quds al-Sharif has been a pillar of my country's foreign policy. Our support remains unwavering and will always remain unwavering, despite the kind of threats that we have received in recent days. My country has always demonstrated its solidarity with the Palestinian people and their legitimate aspirations. Our parliament, both the Senate and the National Assembly, have unanimously echoed these sentiments. We all stand firmly behind the Palestinian people and behind their just struggle. Let me recall that the first ever standalone General Assembly resolution on Jerusalem, GA Resolution twenty-two fifty-three, adopted on fourth of July nineteen sixty-seven at an emergency special session of the General Assembly, was led and sponsored proudly by Pakistan. Today, equally proudly, Pakistan will join the rest of the international community in adopting this landmark resolution to collectively reject the revisionist decision of the United States. We have also co-sponsored this resolution. Finally, Mister President, in conclusion, let me say, a viable, independent and contiguous state of Palestine on the basis of internationally agreed parameters, the pre-1967 borders and with Al-Quds al-Sharif as its capital, remains the only sustainable guarantee for securing and enduring peace in the Middle East. No other path will ever constitute a just solution. No other plan will work. No other plan will succeed. And no other plan will be acceptable by us. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Pakistan. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Indonesia.
Mister President, I wish to thank you for facilitating this highly critical session today in response to the announcement from President Trump recognizing Jerusalem Al-Quds al-Sharif as the capital of Israel and the relocation of its embassy in Israel to the city of Jerusalem Al-Quds al-Sharif. We also appreciate the League of Arab States and the Organization of Islamic Conference for rapidly responding to the failure of the Security Council earlier this week in adopting its resolution. We also thank the members of the Non-Aligned Movement for their strong support. Mister President, Indonesia, as expressed by our president in the OIC summit in Istanbul, is of the position that the recognition made by the United States to recognize Jerusalem Al-Quds al-Sharif as the capital of Israel is unacceptable and not only hurting the feeling of many peoples in the world, but also hurting the feeling of justice. This unilateral decision brought nothing but keeping us away from the two-state solution and making the independence of Palestine seems far and impossible. In addition, this decision only aggravates the already vulnerable condition and ruins the effort to pursue peace that this august body is longing for far too long. Therefore, once again, we reiterate that the decision should be rejected. Furthermore, this unilateral recognition violates and undermines a number of Security Council resolutions, General Assembly resolutions and supporting the illegal activities committed by Israel, which violates international humanitarian and international human rights law. Mister President, all resolution concerning the status of the Holy City of Jerusalem, Al-Quds al-Sharif and the rest of the Palestinian territory occupied by Israel since nineteen sixty-seven must be respected without exception. There has been international consensus recognizing Jerusalem's centrality and sensitivity to the peace process. Unfortunately, we have witnessed in the past few days statements disrespecting the Security Council resolution and many GA resolutions. Let me briefly recall history and quote paragraph five point B of Security Council Resolution four seven eight one one thousand nine nine hundred eighty, which states, calls upon those states that have established diplomatic mission at Jerusalem to withdraw such mission from the Holy City. This resolution of the Security Council of nineteen eighty was adopted by fourteen votes to none with one abstention. It is still valid and continued to be valid until peace is sustained for the Palestinian. Indonesia will once again stress our position that it does not accept any statements and activities that disgrace this august body and its product that are reflection of the world recognition toward the legitimate rights of the Palestinian people, let alone by one or two states. Let me stress again, any attempts to change the character and status of the Palestinian territory occupied since nineteen sixty-seven, including East Jerusalem, has no legal validity and considered null and void. It also constitutes flagrant violation of international law and major obstacle to the achievement of the two-state solution and a comprehensive peace. Jerusalem Al-Quds al-Sharif is a final status issue that must be resolved through negotiation between the two parties. It is up to us here in this chamber as peace-loving nation, the one that must uphold the rule of law, justice and the dignity of this multilateralism. We need to demonstrate our good faith and trust to the system for the maintenance of peace and security. I call once again on all peace-loving nations to support the resolution that has been forwarded by Yemen and Turkey on behalf of the many co-sponsors, including Indonesia. The Indonesian people put high expectation to the United Nations and its member states, whose resolution has been blatantly violated to make the right decision and make a strong stance against any unilateral recognition in contrary to international law. Indonesia also urged the member of the United Nations not to follow the unilateral recognition of the United States to relocate its embassy to Jerusalem. Indonesia is convinced that we can still rely on the United Nations to fulfill the world expectation. Finally, Mister President, let me once again assure my Palestinian brothers and sisters that Indonesia's support for the legitimate aspiration and rights of the people of Palestine to live in freedom, peace, justice and dignity in their own homeland has been steadfast and will continue undiminished. As I stand here in this august chamber, representing the people of Indonesia, a sovereign country and one of the biggest democracies in the world, a master of its own destiny and decision, to once again reaffirm our strong commitment to always stand with the Palestinian people for their legitimate and inalienable rights. Our support will never cease. It will never weaken. Indonesia tidak akan pernah mundur sejengkalpun dalam perjuangan kemerdekaan Palestina. I thank you, Mister President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Indonesia. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Maldives.
Thank you, Mister President. As a co-sponsor of this resolution, my delegation wishes to thank Yemen for introducing the draft resolution on the status of Jerusalem to the Assembly. And we also thank Turkey and Palestine for their leadership in convening the tenth emergency special session of the General Assembly to consider the status of Jerusalem. My government applauds the visionary leadership that President of the State of Palestine, His Excellency Mr. Mahmoud Abbas, is demonstrating on this issue and, in particular, the Palestinians' unwavering faith in the United Nations. The current international system that The current international system that emerged with the establishment of the United Nations is based on international law. It is a system in which nations of the world, from the greatest powers to micro-states, have all pledged, as they signed onto the U N Charter, to respect, to defend, and to abide by international law. Every member state of the U N, including Israel, is bound to respect and to implement the resolutions of the Security Council in good faith. The Security Council has declared in clear and simple terms that Israel's occupation of the State of Palestine is illegal. Its annexation of the East Jerusalem is illegal. And the decision by any country to recognize Jerusalem as Israel's so-called capital and the relocation of diplomatic missions to Jerusalem is also illegal and should be construed by the international community as null and void. It is reassuring to see that fourteen out of the fifteen members of the Security Council earlier this week voted to uphold international law with regard to the status of Jerusalem. The General Assembly, by adopting the resolution on Jerusalem today, will demonstrate the international consensus on the issue. The message to Israel and the handful of countries that supports its illegal action are very clear: The international community is united in upholding the rule of law and that there is no place in the international system for illegal occupation and annexation of people's lands. Israel needs to understand that the final status of Jerusalem can be decided through negotiated settlement that any unilateral action to recognize Jerusalem would be in violation of international law and the relevant Security Council resolutions on this matter. This is an opportunity for Israel to make a strategic decision that will shape the future of its people, the people of the entire Middle East, and beyond. My government appeals to Israel to withdraw from illegal occupation of Palestine and to help create conditions for the establishment of an independent and sovereign state of Palestine that can coexist side by side with Israel within secure and recognized borders based on nineteen sixty-seven lines with East Jerusalem as its capital. That is the solution that the U N Security Council resolutions have advanced. The Maldives therefore calls on Israel to implement the relevant resolutions to fully respect the legal obligations it undertook in the international agreements it has signed onto and to return immediately to a framework that could advance the Middle East peace process based on a two-state solution. The center of gravity in international politics is shifting towards the rule of law. No power is too great to ignore this reality. That is the reality that the resolution we will adopt today will crystallize. And the Maldives will continue to work to ensure that this reality is sustained over time as it is hopeful to get elected to the Security Council for the term twenty nineteen to twenty twenty. We will work with every member state to ensure that the United Nations remain the key actor in finding a lasting solution for the people of Palestine and in crafting shared solution for a shared destiny for all of us. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Maldives. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Syrian Arab Republic.
Mr. President, the government of the Syrian Arab Republic condemns the decision taken by the United States of America to transfer its embassy to the city of, to the occupied city of Al-Quds and to recognize this as a capital, to recognize it as the capital of the Israeli state and reaffirms that this decision constitutes a flagrant breach of the legal, political, and historic status of the city of Al-Quds and is but yet another component of the crime of usurpation of Palestine and enforced displacement of its peoples with the aim of the establishment of a colonial occupying entity on its territory. This decision taken by the administration of the American President constitutes a flagrant violation of Security Council resolutions and resolutions of the General Assembly, resolutions which called upon Israel to withdraw from the occupied territory in nineteen sixty-seven, including Al-Quds. Thereby, these decisions are part of the unilateral actions which have no action and no impact on the legal status of Al-Quds. Their gravity lies in the fact that this constitutes an official declaration of the United States administration that it has never been and will never stand as a neutral party nor qualified mediator in any attempt to attain a peaceful settlement to the Israeli-Palestinian conflict. Mr. President, the Syrian Arab Republic vehemently condemns the United States' exercise of veto against the draft resolution on the status of Jerusalem at the Security Council. This is yet another confirmation of the disdain of the United States, the disdain vis-à-vis the international law and flagrant violation of international legitimacy, and it unmasks their unlimited support for the racist colonial Zionist entity which undermines the rights of the Palestinian people. The Syrian Arab Republic, Mr. President, despite the terrorist war which we are enduring with all the challenges that this carries, has never and will never throw in the towel and we will never announce our unwavering position vis-à-vis the Palestinian question and vis-à-vis the rights of Christians, Palestinians, and Muslims in the city of Quds al-Sharif. And we shall spare no effort in restitution of all occupied Arab territories. The Syrian Arab Republic has been and continues to stand firm with a position of principle. We support the right of the Palestinian people to self-determination and to the establishment of an independent state on its national territory with Al-Quds as the capital and the guarantee for the right of return of refugees pursuant to Resolution of nineteen forty-eight, Resolution one ninety-four, and the State of Palestine as an observance member of the United Nations. And we call for it to stand as a full-fledged member with all rights within this body. By way of conclusion, we reiterate our call upon the United Nations to shoulder its responsibility in implementation of Security Council resolutions and General Assembly resolutions with the aim of putting an end to the suffering of the Palestinian people and putting an end to the Israeli occupation of Arab territories and the establishment of a Palestinian state with Al-Quds as its capital, which is what is taking place today irrefutably reflects the fact that the United States of America is not concerned by any settlement, a fair and comprehensive settlement to the conflict. And the arrogance of that country has risen to the level of threatening states and intimidating states if said states uphold the rights of the Palestinian people and ensure, seek to ensure respect for Security Council and General Assembly resolutions. This is a superpower which views the United Nations as a national institution and deals with members of the body as school students, students who must be punished when they fail to yield to their authority and hegemony. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Syrian Arab Republic. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Bangladesh.
Mr. President, we thank you for resuming this tenth emergency special session under the Uniting for Peace procedure as per General Assembly Resolution of nineteen fifty. Bangladesh aligns itself with the statements delivered on behalf of NAM and OIC. Our Honorable President attended the sixth extraordinary OIC summit held in Istanbul on thirteenth December two thousand seventeen, convened by Honorable President Erdogan to articulate our views on the Middle East peace process, including the question of East Jerusalem. Our Honorable Prime Minister also reaffirmed our unequivocal position on East Jerusalem as the capital of an independent and viable state of Palestine. Bangladesh remains deeply concerned over any decision or announcement that may compromise the status of East Jerusalem as a final status issue in the Middle East peace process and contribute to changing its historical and legal status, its demographic structure, and its historic Arab-Islamic character. We remain concerned over the possible grave consequences and threats to international peace and security to be inflamed by such decision and action, raising new waves of tension, hostility, and violent extremism in the already volatile Middle East that is likely to spill over to other parts of the world. Bangladesh stresses on preserving the legal status of Jerusalem within the framework of relevant U N resolutions, including relevant Security Council resolutions. Bangladesh reaffirms its position in favor of establishing the State of Palestine on the basis of the nineteen sixty-seven borders with East Jerusalem as its capital. Bangladesh urges all parties concerned to take a pragmatic approach to the Middle East peace process in reaching a two-state solution for enduring peace and stability in the region. As Bangladesh strives to deal with massive ongoing influx of forcibly displaced people from Myanmar's Rakhine State, we continue to associate ourselves with any call or initiative to bring to closure protracted conflicts that continue to foment indignation, intolerance, and mindless violence threatening to spare no one in the international community. Bangladesh supports the draft resolution in keeping with our constitutional obligation our longstanding principled position on the question of Palestine and our commitment to international peace and stability and to the principles of international law. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Bangladesh. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Cuba.
Senor President.
President, Cuba fully endorses the statement delivered by the delegation of the Bolivarian Republic of Venezuela on behalf of the Non-Aligned Movement. We also support the statements delivered by the Minister of Foreign Affairs of Turkey on behalf of the Organization of Islamic Cooperation and the statement delivered by the delegation of Yemen on behalf of the Arab group. President, Cuba's position on the issue that brings us together today is steadfast and has been clearly stated in the Declaration of the Ministry of Foreign Affairs of Cuba on the recognition by the United States of the city of Jerusalem as the capital of Israel, a statement issued on the sixth of December two thousand and seventeen. In this regard, the Ministry of Foreign Affairs of the Republic of Cuba expresses its deepest concern about and rejection of the U S President's unilateral declaration of the city of Jerusalem as the capital of Israel, which is a serious and flagrant violation of the U N Charter, of international law, and of the relevant United Nations resolutions. This intention of the United States government to change Jerusalem's historic status undermines the legitimate interests of the Palestinian people and of the Arab and Islamic nations. It will have serious consequences for stability and security in the Middle East, will further exacerbate the tensions in the region, and will hinder any effort to resume Israeli-Palestinian peace talks. Cuba calls on the Security Council to fulfill its responsibility under the U N Charter in maintaining international peace and security, to take the necessary decisions, and to demand from Israel an immediate end to its occupation of the Palestinian territories, its aggressive policies, and colonizing practices, and to call upon Israel to comply with the United Nations resolutions on the situation in the Middle East, including the Palestinian questions. The Ministry of Foreign Affairs reiterates that Cuba will continue to support a comprehensive, just, and lasting solution to the Palestinian-Israeli conflict on the basis of a two-state solution to realize the right of the Palestinians to self-determination and to have an independent sovereign state with its capital in East Jerusalem and within its pre-nineteen sixty-seven borders. To conclude, President, I would just like to add that consistent with its historic principled position on this matter, Cuba has joined the co-sponsors of the draft resolution as contained in Document A slash E S hyphen ten slash L twenty-two, entitled Statute of Jerusalem, and will, of course, vote in favor of this draft resolution. Thank you very much.
I thank the distinguished representative of Cuba. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Islamic Republic of Iran.
Bismillah Rahman Rahim, Mr. President. Over the course of the last several decades, the Israeli regime has continuously committed a host of crimes by occupying the Palestinian land, killing and displacing Palestinians while enjoying total impunity. Along this path, the United States has been aiding and abetting the Israeli regime by providing its unconditional support and defending this regime by all means. The U S government has never hesitated to misuse its veto power in violation of the U N Charter to shield the Israeli regime in the Security Council against the will of the international community. Three days ago, when U S vetoed a draft U N Security Council resolution, it was the forty-third time the U S had used its veto power to protect Israel from facing the consequences of its heinous crimes and blocked the efforts by the members of the international community to find a solution to the question of Palestine. The recent illegal decision by the U S administration to recognize Al-Quds as the capital of the Israeli regime and to move its embassy to its holy, to this holy city has made it crystal clear that the U S is only seeking to secure the maximum interest of the Israeli regime and considers no respect for the legitimate rights of Palestinians, including its rights to self-determination. Mr. President, the question of Palestine has been on the agenda of the United Nations since its early years. Further, the international community has rightfully recognized the ineligible rights of the Palestinian for many decades. The Israeli occupation lies at the center of all crises and conflicts in the Middle East and beyond, a fact which has long been acknowledged by the United Nations. The appalling tragedy and the old wound of our region in the past one hundred years, which began with the conspiracy of the Belfort Declaration, has entered a new phase with the politically incorrect, illegal, and unlawful promise of the U S President to move the American embassy to the holy city of Al-Quds. We strongly condemn this reckless unilateral act by U S to distort the historical facts and replace them with fictions. This administration has done little to hide its intentions to shift the focus of the Security Council from the question of Palestine to fabricated alternative issues in our region to give the Israeli regime more space to freely pursue its criminal policy and practices. With this intention, the United States, several times in the Security Council open debates on the situation of the Middle East, has stressed that the U S no longer subscribes to the internationally shared belief that the question of Palestine is the council's priority in the region. Such reprehensible statements are part of a bigger plot Such reprehensible statements are part of a bigger plot to legitimize the Israeli occupation and its expansionist policy and practices, which violate not only each and every norm of international law, but also teachings of all divine religions and prophets that are based on justice and compassion. The member states never paid heed to this delusional desire. This General Assembly meeting, as well as the recent Security Council meeting on this issue, are clear manifestation that the US plan has failed and the occupation of Palestine and Al-Quds stand at the center of all conflicts in the Middle East. In conclusion, Palestine is in the heart and minds of all Muslims, as well as all peace-loving nations around the globe. Denying this fact is equal to being accomplice with the Israeli illegal occupation and actions and ignoring human conscience. The Islamic Republic of Iran expresses its solidarity with the oppressed people of Palestine during this difficult time. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Islamic Republic of Iran. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of China.
Mr. President, the Palestinian question is at the core of the Middle East issue as a fundamental problem bearing on peace in the region, of which the status of Jerusalem stands out as especially complex and sensitive, bearing on the basis of solution to the Palestinian question. Quite a number of resolutions of the General Assembly and the Security Council contain provisions on the status of Jerusalem. Under the current circumstances, we call on the international community to remain united in a joint effort to pursue peace, facilitate the de-escalation of Jerusalem-related situation for the greater good of stability and tranquility and peace process in the Middle East. The two-state solution is the right path to the political settlement of the Palestinian question. The international community needs to build on the relevant UN resolutions, the principle of land for peace, and our peace initiative, to scale up efforts to facilitate the resumption of negotiations and settle the crucial issues, including the final status of Jerusalem, and achieve a comprehensive, just, and lasting settlement of the Palestinian question. China has been firmly supporting and facilitating Middle East peace process, support the just cause of the Palestinian people in restoring their national legal rights, support establishment of independent state of Palestine based on pre-1967 border with East Jerusalem as its capital and with full sovereignty. China's position as such will never change. President Xi Jinping of China put forward a four-point proposal last July on the settlement of the Palestinian question, including the promotion of a political process based on the two-state solution, adherence to the common comprehensive, cooperative, and sustainable vision of security, further coordination of the international efforts to enhance synergy for peace, holistic approach to development for peace. China will continue to play its constructive role in promoting a political solution to the Palestinian question in the interest of peace, stability, and development in the Middle East. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of China. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Malaysia.
Thank you, Mr. President. At the outset, I wish to extend my appreciation and commend you, Mr. President, for the timely convening of this important emergency special session of the General Assembly following the failure of the Security Council to adopt a similar resolution on Jerusalem introduced by Egypt on Monday, eight in December. Allow me to also extend my delegation's appreciation to Yemen for tabling the draft resolution A/ES-10/L22 on the status of Jerusalem at this session. My delegation wishes to align itself with the statement delivered earlier on by Venezuela on behalf of the Non-Aligned Movement. Mr. President, Malaysia joins the international community in expressing our deep concern and reject the decision by United States to recognize Jerusalem as the capital of Israel and relocate its embassy from Tel Aviv to Jerusalem. Such a move undermines efforts towards finding a comprehensive, just, and durable solution to the Palestinian-Israeli conflict. It has caused particularly the Palestinians and the Muslim world, including those who wish to see peace, stability, and security in the region. It is also an infringement of the Palestinian people's right and their right to self-determination. The decision also goes against relevant UNSC resolutions such as Resolution 478, nineteen eighty, and Resolution 2334, twenty sixteen, which provided the foundations for the peace process that affirmed the city of Jerusalem as a final status issue which must be resolved through bilateral negotiation between Palestine and Israel under the framework of the two-state solution. Mr. President, the issue of Al-Quds al-Sharif is at the heart of the Palestinian cause. Recognition of Jerusalem as the capital of Israel endorses Israel's brutal occupation and repressive policies, which have caused immense suffering to the Palestinian people. We are concerned that this dire situation will only feed into the agenda of the extremist and frustrate our collective efforts in our bigger objective of combating terrorism and ending the vicious cycle of violence. The impasse in the Middle East peace process needs pragmatic solutions based on the relevant UNSC resolutions and UNGE resolution and based on international law and norms, and we hope the United States can make a helpful contribution by rescinding its decision and shouldering its responsibility in helping to achieve a comprehensive and lasting peace on the basis of the two-state solution. Mr. President, Malaysia continues to believe that a two-state solution where the Palestinians and Israelis living side by side in peace based on the pre-1967 borders with each Jerusalem as the capital of Palestine is the only viable solution to this long-lasting conflict. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Malaysia. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the Democratic People's Republic of Korea.
Mr. President, the international community strengthens its cooperation more than able to put an end to the confrontation and contradiction between Palestine and Israel, which lasted for over half a century and ensuring lasting peace in the Middle East. At the seventieth summit of the Non-Aligned Movement held in Venezuela last September, the heads of state and government reaffirmed their commitment to defend the interest of developing countries in the issue directly related to the world peace and security such as the situation in the Middle East, including the question of Palestine, by promoting multitism especially by strengthening key role of the United Nations. Furthermore, last December, the United Nations Security Council adopted the resolution which argued Israel to stop the illegal construction of settlement area of Jews in the West Bank and East Al-Quds. The decision by US President Trump to recognize Quds as the capital of Israel and to move the US Embassy there will deserve global condemnation and rejection as it is an open defense of and insult to the international legitimacy and unanimity will of the international society. The state of Quds remains so sensitive that it for sure should be solved fairly by means of legitimating the national large of the Palestinian people and striking a comprehensive and lasting solution of the Middle East problems. The US and Israel should bear full responsibility for all the consequences of tension and instability that will be entailed in the Middle East region owing to each reckless and high-handed act. The United States and Israel should pay due attention to the effort of the international community to solve the issue of Middle East, including question of Palestine, in conformity with international law and other related UN Security Council resolutions for the benefit of the Palestine and Arab people and attend the Middle East peace process with honesty and diligence. My delegation avails itself of this opportunity to reiterate its support and encouragement to the struggle of Palestinian people, retraving their legitimate right to setting up the independence and state with East Al-Quds as its capital and to the struggle of Arab people for their cause of justice. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Democratic People's Republic of Korea. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of South Africa.
Mr. President, I would like to thank you for convening this meeting. South Africa's position with regard to Jerusalem is a principled one, which is represented in relevant United Nations General Assembly and Security Council resolutions. We believe Jerusalem is a final status issue to resolve through direct negotiations between the two parties on the basis of the relevant Security Council and General Assembly resolutions. That inform our position to support and cosponsor this draft resolution. We would further like to state we align ourselves with the NAM statement as delivered by Venezuela. South Africa is deeply concerned that unilateral action by the United States to recognize Jerusalem as the capital city of Israel undermines progress that has been registered within the context of the Middle East peace process, the MEPP. We believe that the MEPP seeks to secure a lasting sustainable peace between the state of Israel and the state of Palestine. We believe the decision by the US government to relocate the US Embassy to Jerusalem is regrettable and is not constructive in advancing a sustainable solution in the MEPP. The South African government remains in favor of a two-state solution for Palestine and Israel based on the international recognition and independence of the state of Palestine based on the four June 1967 borders with East Jerusalem as its capital, with the peoples of Palestine and Israel existing peacefully, side by side, in two independent states. We also recall all United Nations resolutions, including Security Council Resolution 476, nineteen eighty, and 478, nineteen eighty as well, to which the Council inter alia reconfirmed that all legislative and administrative measures and actions taken by Israel, the occupying power, which report to alter the character and status of the holy city of Jerusalem, have no legal validity and must be rescinded forthwith, affirm that the interantement of the basic laws by Israel constitute a violation of international law, decides not to recognize the basic law and such other actions by Israel that, as a result of the law, seek to alter the character and status of Jerusalem, and call upon all member states to accept this decision, and called upon those states that have established diplomatic missions at Jerusalem to withdraw such missions from the holy city. In this regard, we call for the full respect of the relevant Security Council resolutions and decisions. Mr. President, South Africa continues to believe that the best option for the resolution of the Arab-Israeli conflict is premised upon firstly, the inalienable right of the Palestinian people to self-determination and independence, which entails a principled position against the military occupation of the Palestinian people and their land; secondly, the right of both the peoples of Israel and Palestine to live side by side in peace in their own states with internationally recognized borders; thirdly, I believe that there can be no military solution to the conflict and that peaceful negotiations is the only means of ensuring lasting peace, security, and stability; and fourthly, a commitment to multilateralism in order to secure a sustainable solution and a rules-based international order. Finally, we appeal to the government of the United States of America to reconsider its decision to relocate its embassy in Israel to Jerusalem, as such a move compromises and undermines the principles of a two-state solution based on a peaceful coexistence between the peoples of Israel and Palestine. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of South Africa. I now call on the observer for the observer state for the Holy See.
Mr. President, the delegation of the Holy See wishes to express its appreciation to the member states for their commitment to averting new rounds of violence and to promoting dialogue and negotiations between Israelis and Palestinians on the peace process and the question of Jerusalem. At the same time, it wishes to recall the obligation of all nations to respect the historical status quo of the holy city in accordance with relevant UN resolutions. Mr. President, the unique identity of Jerusalem, which is of universal interest, consists in its particular nature as a holy city, most sacred to the three monotheistic religions, and a symbol for millions of believers worldwide who consider it their spiritual capital. Its significance goes beyond the question of borders, and this reality should be considered a priority in every negotiation for a political solution. The Holy See, therefore, calls for a peaceful resolution that respects the nature of Jerusalem, its sacredness and universal value, and reiterates that only an internationally guaranteed status can preserve its unique character and be an assurance of dialogue and reconciliation for peace in the region. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the observer for the observer state for the Holy See. We have heard the last speaker in the debate on this item. I'd like to inform delegations that the debate on the item has concluded. As such, statements will therefore be limited to explanation of vote. In this regard, I'd like to recall that in accordance with Rule 88 of the Rules of Procedure of the General Assembly, the proposer of a proposal is not permitted to explain their vote on their own proposal. The Assembly will now take a decision on draft resolution A/ES-10/L22 entitled Status of Jerusalem. For your information, the draft resolution has closed for e-sponsorship. I now give the floor to the representative of the Secretariat.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. I should like to announce that since the submission of the draft resolution, and in addition to those delegations listed on the L document, the following countries have also become co-sponsors of A/ES-10/L22: Algeria, Bahrain, Bangladesh, the plurinational state of Bolivia, Brunei Darussalam, Cuba, Djibouti, Ecuador, Egypt, Gambia, Indonesia, Iraq, Jordan, Kuwait, Lebanon, Libya, Malaysia, Maldives, Mauritania, Morocco, Oman, Pakistan, Qatar, Saudi Arabia, Senegal, Sudan, Syrian Arab Republic, Tunisia, United Arab Emirates, Uzbekistan, Bolivarian Republic of Venezuela, and State of Palestine. I would also like to inform delegations that Afghanistan and Mali have withdrawn their sponsorship. If any other countries wish to co-sponsor A/ES/10/L22, please signify now by pressing South Africa, Comoros and Somalia have also joined the list of delegations co-sponsoring the resolution, and Democratic Republic of Korea. Any others? Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. A recorded vote has been requested. We shall now begin the voting process. Those in favor of draft resolution A/ES-10/L22, please signify. Those against, abstentions.
The General Assembly is now voting on draft resolution A/ES-10/L22 entitled Status of Jerusalem. Will all delegations confirm that their votes are accurately reflected on the screen? The voting has been completed. Please lock the machine.
The result of the vote is as follows: in favor, 128; against, 9; abstentions, 35. Before giving the floor for explanations of vote after the vote, may I remind delegations that explanations of vote are limited to 10 minutes and should be made by delegation from their seats. I now give the floor to Estonia on behalf of a group of countries.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Let me deliver this explanation of vote after the vote on behalf of the following EU member states: Austria, Belgium, Bulgaria, Cyprus, Denmark, Estonia, Finland, France, Germany, Ireland, Italy, Luxembourg, Malta, Netherlands, Portugal, Slovakia, Slovenia, Spain, Sweden and the United Kingdom, as well as on behalf of Montenegro and Serbia. We reiterate our firm commitment to the two-state solution and, in this context, the position of our states on Jerusalem remains unchanged. The aspirations of both parties must be fulfilled and a way must be found through negotiations to resolve the status of Jerusalem as the future capital of both states. We will continue to respect the international consensus on Jerusalem embodied in inter alia UN Security Council Resolution 478, including on the location of their diplomatic representations until the final status of Jerusalem is resolved. Recognizing the special significance of the holy sites of Jerusalem, we strongly believe that the status quo for the Temple Mount Al-Haram Al-Sharif must be upheld in line with previous understandings and with respect to Jordan's special role. Our countries will continue to work tirelessly with the parties' regional and international partners, not least within the Middle East Quartet, to promote a return to a meaningful process towards a negotiated two-state solution in line with known parameters towards a peace that can be sustained. A negotiated two-state solution which fulfills the aspirations of both sides is the only realistic way to bring the lasting peace and security that both Israelis and Palestinians deserve. I thank you very much, Mr. President.
I thank Estonia on behalf of a group of countries. I now give the floor to Australia.
Thank you, Mr. President. Australia has a longstanding commitment to a two-state solution in the conflict between Israel and the Palestinians. This has been articulated at the highest levels of the Australian government and reconfirmed in recent weeks. There is much in this resolution with which we agree. We agree that Jerusalem is a final status issue to be resolved through negotiations, and Australia will maintain its diplomatic representation to Israel in Tel Aviv and its representation to the Palestinian Authority in Ramallah. We also agree with the call for an intensification of efforts aimed at achieving a comprehensive, just and lasting peace. Australia does not support unilateral action by either side of this conflict. We consider that such actions undermine the peace process. We do not, however, consider that this further resolution, in addition to the many on the peace process issued by the General Assembly each year, helps bring the parties back to the negotiating table. We do not wish to see any party isolated from the process, and so we have abstained on this occasion. We also wish to see the United States of America continue to play a leadership role in seeking a resolution to the conflict. Although we are under no illusions that finding a resolution to the conflict will be easy, our firm and sincere hope is that Israel and the Palestinians will return to the negotiating table as soon as possible, and we continue to encourage them to do so. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank Australia. I give the floor to Paraguay.
Paraguay abstained on this resolution on the status of Jerusalem, and we abstained in that vote because we believe that this issue is currently before the Security Council, which is the body entrusted by the Charter of the United Nations to be responsible for international peace and security. The government of Paraguay would like to reaffirm its longstanding stance that this issue should be revolved through the path of direct negotiations between the parties in such a way as to enable us to arrive at the two-state solution, two states living side by side in peace within safe and secure and duly internationally recognized borders. Thank you very much, President.
I thank Paraguay. I give the floor to El Salvador.
Thank you very much indeed, President. I am taking the floor to provide this explanation of vote after the vote on the draft resolution entitled Status of Jerusalem. That is to be found in Document A/ES-10/L22, as recently adopted by this emergency special session of the General Assembly. On this particular issue, I would like to begin by reiterating El Salvador's unwavering support for a negotiated solution that takes the form of two states in which Israelis and Palestinians can live together in peace under the principles of the Charter of the United Nations and in full respect for all resolutions of the Security Council. Over the last few years and in all the resolutions adopted by the various commissions and committees and within the plenary of the General Assembly, El Salvador has been steadfast in its support of this view, of this end goal. Without prejudice to the content of the resolution that we have just adopted that was submitted jointly by the Arab League and the Organization of Islamic Cooperation, we note a growing practice within the General Assembly in which texts are submitted for consideration by the membership without allowing even the barest minimum of space for previous discussion, and this includes texts that are submitted for a vote. We believe that the submission of draft resolutions to the General Assembly needs to go hand-in-hand with a minimum period of time for open consultation with all member states of this organization, irrespective of and without prejudice to the nature of the emergency, the emergency nature, I beg your pardon, of this session. This lack of space for an open discussion in advance in the General Assembly is what compels my delegation to voice its view that we wish to make it clear that this cannot generate a precedent in the working methods of this body, as this body is the most representative and democratic body of our entire House. Therefore, and without prejudice to the position that my country might have taken if we had been presented with a text on which we could have engaged in consultations, El Salvador decided to abstain in this vote to demonstrate its unhappiness with the procedure followed in dealing with this draft. We reiterate once again that this should not cast any doubt on our support for dialogue and the path of multilateralism as the only way for solving conflict and global challenges, and it should in no way detract from El Salvador's appeal to all parties involved to exercise restraint and responsibility in their actions and decisions and to make headway towards concrete and tangible solutions on the ground. Thank you very much, President.
I give the floor to Argentina.
Thank you, President. Argentina abstained in the vote on the draft resolution that was submitted to this resumed tenth emergency session of the General Assembly because we feel that this draft resolution will in no way help us to resolve the conflict between the two parties. And this does not imply any change in Argentina's longstanding view of this particular situation. We lend our unwavering support to a lasting definitive peaceful solution to the question on Palestine, which is to be found on the basis of a two-state solution living within the pre-1967 borders, and the parties shall determine any changes to that through the process of negotiations alone. Argentina is a strong and steadfast supporter of all attempts to try and bring about peace and stability in the Middle East. We urge regional actors and friends of Israel and of Palestine to work in a constructive spirit in order to persuade the parties to be able to move forward in solving their differences and their disputes so that direct negotiations can resume. For that to take place, we will need to make a joint and collective effort in order to promote and uphold the two-state solution as enshrined in the relevant resolutions of this, the General Assembly and of the Security Council, and as also contained in the Arab Peace Initiative and in the Quartet roadmap. Thank you very much indeed, President.
I thank Argentina. I give the floor to Romania.
Mr. President, Romania underlines the need for a just and long-lasting solution of the Israeli-Palestinian conflict through the implementation of the two-state solution, Israel and Palestine, living side by side in peace and security, as the only viable solution capable to guarantee the fulfillment of both sides' aspirations. Jerusalem represents a central theme in the peace negotiations, and its status must be decided by a direct agreement between the two parties involved, as underlined by both the European Union and the United Nations and the US administration as well. Romania's position concerning the status of the city of Jerusalem complies with the provisions of the international legislation and the relevant resolutions of the Security Council and the General Assembly. Expressing its concern towards the possible negative repercussions on the security climate in the Middle East, Romania is calling for calm and encourages the parties to resume direct dialogue in order to move forward the peace process. We consider time has come for renewing the international efforts in order to relaunch the peace process in the Middle East, and in this regard, we look cautiously to the moment of launching this resolution. Thank you.
I thank Romania. I now give the floor to Canada.
Thank you, Mr. President. Canada has opted to abstain. Canada remains steadfastly committed to a just, holistic and lasting peace in the Middle East. This includes the establishment of a Palestinian state living side by side with Israel in peace and security. Canada is of the view that the status of Jerusalem is a part and parcel of the final status question. This is our longstanding position, and it is that the status of Jerusalem can only be settled within the framework of a comprehensive settlement to the Israeli-Palestinian conflict.
Building the conditions necessary for the parties to find a peaceful solution, we are disappointed that this resolution is one-sided and does not advance prospects for peace to which we aspire, which is why we have abstained on today's vote. Mr. President, we also take this opportunity to emphasize the importance of the city of Jerusalem to the three monotheistic religions. Denying the connection between Jerusalem and the Jewish, Muslim and Christian faiths undermines the integrity of the site for all. We also reiterate the need to maintain the status quo at Jerusalem's holy sites. Canada calls for calm and firmly condemns the violence, terrorism, Islam's holy sites. Canada calls for calm and firmly condemns the violence, terrorism and targeting of civilians witnessed in the past weeks. Thank you.
I thank Canada. I now give the floor to Nicaragua.
President, Nicaragua, in explaining its vote in favor of the draft resolution A/ES-10/L22, would like to voice its deep-rooted concern and its rebuttal of recent unilateral actions and attempts to try and modify the character, status and demographic composition of the city of Jerusalem. Such unilateral actions are a blatant violation of the relevant resolutions of the General Assembly and of the Security Council of the United Nations, including Resolution 2334 dated December 2016. This resolution makes it abundantly clear that no change shall be recognized to the Fourth of June 1967 borders, including as that pertains to East Jerusalem, unless such changes are agreed to directly by the parties to the conflict. It is regrettable that the resolution submitted to the Security Council on Monday by the Arab Republic of Egypt on the status of Jerusalem was not adopted by that body, which was thumbing one's nose at the voice of the international community and sets a dangerous precedent for international law. The solution of the Palestinian question and the status of Jerusalem compels us all to act with urgency, and it also calls for urgent negotiations on the basis of compromise and commitment and framed by the relevant resolutions of the United Nations. Nicaragua would like to reiterate that such unilateral actions, as we've seen in the recent past, jeopardize peace and stability in this region and draw us further and further away from a solution to the situation in the Middle East. It is vital that we refrain from any steps and framed by the relevant resolutions of the United Nations. Nicaragua would like to reiterate that such a unilateral action-y solution to this question is the two-state, one, a state of Israel and a state of Palestine, living within the 1967 borders and with East Jerusalem as the capital of the State of Palestine, a situation in which both countries can enjoy their rights and their freedoms and live together in harmony, security and cooperation and in lasting peace. Both countries and both peoples enjoy the same right to peace, security and sustainable development. Nicaragua, which is a friendly people of peace and a full respecter of international law, would like to reiterate its full backing and endorsement for all initiatives promoting dialogue, negotiation and conversation which will lead to the so-long-awaited peace and to cooperation in this region. We call for a ramping up of national, regional and international efforts to support the quest for a solution to the Palestinian question. Thank you very much, President.
I thank Nicaragua. I now give the floor to Mexico.
Mexico abstained in this vote because
because we are alarmed about the distortion that is taking place of the legitimate quest for peace between Palestine and Israel. Today, we are further away than ever before from reaching an agreement. We are certainly no closer. Mexico does not see it as positive or useful to the peace process that a unilateral declaration has taken place to recognize Jerusalem as the capital of Israel, nor do we believe it to be useful and we see as disproportionate to convene an emergency session of the General Assembly in order to reject said unilateral declaration. The United States needs to be part of the solution to the conflict between Palestinians and Israelis and it should not become a stumbling block or indeed a further stumbling block that would hamper progress. We call for calm and restraint on all sides. Mexico is a strong proponent of dialogue as the way of solving the conflict between Israel and Palestine on the basis of the two-state solution. In other words, the right of both Israel and of Palestine to live in peace within secure and internationally recognized borders as was agreed to in the Oslo Accords and further underscored by various resolutions of the Security Council and of this very body, the United Nations General Assembly. Israel must respect the special character and status of the holy city of Jerusalem and it must also preserve the unique spiritual and religious features of the holy and sacred places of that city. Mexico will keep its embassy in Tel Aviv as has been the case thus far for all countries that have diplomatic relations with Israel. All diplomatic missions have been in Tel Aviv in line with Resolution 478 of 1980 of the Security Council. It is also in line with the relevant resolutions of the General Assembly of the United Nations pertaining to the status of Jerusalem. We would like to recall that Jerusalem is also Palestinian and the eastern sector of that city should therefore serve as the capital of Palestine. Mexico would like to reiterate its unwavering view that a political and peaceful solution of the conflict should be arrived at through direct negotiations without strings attached, direct negotiations between the parties. These negotiations would enable them to resolve the substantive problems that divide them, including the definitive status of Jerusalem. Thank you very much, President.
I thank Mexico. I give the floor to Czech Republic.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Czech Republic fully supports the common EU position on Jerusalem as stated at the recent European Council. Nevertheless, we have decided to abstain during today's vote because in our view, the resolution does not contribute to the solution of the Middle East peace process. On the contrary, it contributes to the differences between both sides, the Israelis and the Palestinians. The Czech Republic strongly believes that it is important to find an outcome regarding the Jerusalem issue at the negotiating table. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
I thank the Czech Republic. I now give the floor to Armenia.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Armenia has already expressed its position on the status of Jerusalem and has not changed it. The status of Jerusalem is one of the most important issues on the international agenda and should be solved through negotiations within the context of the acceptable solutions for the parties to the Israeli-Palestinian conflict. This can pave the way for the establishment of lasting peace and security. Jerusalem has a centuries-old Armenian presence, a rich Armenian historical and cultural heritage. The Armenian Apostolic Church is one of the major gardens of the Christian holy places. Therefore, we are attentively following all developments with regard to Jerusalem. We took note of the recently expressed positions on Jerusalem, recognizing that they do not prejudice the determination of the final status of Jerusalem through negotiations. Thank you very much.
I thank Armenia. I give the floor to Hungary.
Mr. President, the position of the Hungarian government has been consistent. Hungary doesn't comment the foreign policy decision of the UN's administration. The position of the Hungarian government regarding the Middle East peace process remains unchanged. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank Hungary. I give the floor to Latvia.
Mr. President, Latvia's position remains unchanged. Latvia considers that peace in the Middle East can be achieved through two-state solution to be achieved in Israeli-Palestinian talks, taking into account the interests of both sides. Latvia considers that the status of Jerusalem must be decided in direct talks and Jerusalem must become the capital of two states. Within the EU, Latvia, together with other EU member states and its institutions, will continue to an active dialogue in order to search for a positive solution to the Middle East peace process. It is important not to escalate the political and security situation in the region. Latvia did not see that this resolution would contribute to the determination of the status of Jerusalem and therefore abstained on it. Thank you.
I thank Latvia. We have heard the last speaker in explanations of vote after the vote. Before proceeding further, I'd like to give the floor to the representative of the Secretariat.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to inform delegations that Afghanistan remains an additional sponsor of the draft resolution. Due to a miscommunication, the Secretariat had erroneously announced that Afghanistan had withdrawn its sponsorship. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the representative of the Secretariat. The delegation of Estonia requested the floor.
Thank you very much once again, Mr. President. I would like to make the following clarification to the statement I made earlier on behalf of a number of member states and I would like to add Albania, Lithuania, and the former Yugoslav republic of Macedonia to the statement. Thank you very much.
I thank the delegation of Estonia. In accordance with the terms of paragraph four of the resolution just adopted, the 10th emergency special session of the General Assembly is adjourned. The meeting is adjourned.